Okay, tonight we're going to start the evening with a public hearing. Public hearing on Texas Annual Performance Report. I've asked Dr. Knell to present information on that report. And if anybody has any comments when he's complete with the report, if you'll come to the podium and state your name, and if you keep your comments to a couple of minutes, we'd appreciate it. So at this time, I'll turn it over to Dr. Knell.
Well, good evening, President Bush, members of the board, Dr. Stockton, and our community. We are thankful that you're here tonight and were able to make it through the weather, and hopefully everyone came out through that cold snap okay. It's an honor to be here tonight to present our annual performance report to you. It's a culmination of many different reports, and I'll share that with you. But really what it is, is a picture of hard work. We have great people in Conroy ISD that work very hard to make sure that our students can be successful. And many of them are here tonight. I see a lot of our staff members and principals and assistant principals here. So if all of our Conroy ISD staff members that are here tonight, that are on campuses, that work with our students each day, if you would stand up so we could recognize you before we do this presentation. Thank you all for being here and doing what you do every day. As part of our annual performance report tonight, we're going to be looking at data that comes from many reports, mostly from our TAPER. That's the Texas Academic Performance Report. Tapers are available for all school districts across the state and each campus. So you can go in directly to TEA's website and see this information, or you can go to the Conroy ISD website, and we have it there for you as well. We also will be looking at some PMS financial data, as well as criminal incidents, and our report on our graduates that are attending Texas public higher learning institutions. Overall, our accountability rating on the taper was met standard, which is the highest that it could be. And our special education determination status was meets requirements. When you look at our enrollment, we continue to grow each year. Last year, our official enrollment was 59,489 students. Just as a note, today's enrollment in the district, as of this morning, is 61,580. We actually enrolled almost 800 students last week. Yes, last week, 800. Now, we did also lose some. Some students moved away, but our registrars enrolled 800 students last week. And this is our student membership, just our demographic information as it appears in the taper. Part of the process that we choose to do as we present our taper is to show some context. We like to benchmark ourselves against some other high-performing districts in the area. And so as we go through our performance reports here, you're going to see that we include both Sci Fair, Fort Bend, Uble, Katy, and Klein, as well as our information. So this first slide, all students, how do they perform on the star? You can see we were at 85%. All students, all subjects, masters grade level. This is, would have been the old commended performance level. All students, all subjects, met or exceeded. Our English language learners, how did they perform at approaches grade level or above? Did they pass? You can see we're at 59%. Special education students, 48%. Our economically disadvantaged students, how did they perform at approaches grade level and masters grade level? Attendance rate, 96.4. I believe this is the highest attendance rate that maybe we've ever had. Here's just a chart showing the last few years. This is a reflection of a lot of hard work that goes on on campuses. There's a lot of phone calls being made when students aren't present, and it's just reflective of a great learning environment when kids want to be present at school. There is a ceiling to this number, and I'm not sure exactly what it is, but there is a point where, and 100% is not it, right? Students will be sick and will not be available to be at school on a given day, and we don't want them to be at school if they are sick. So, you know, there is a ceiling. It may be at 97, 97. I'm not, I'm not sure exactly where it is, but I think we're getting close to it. So this is great. In our current year-to-date, as of today, we're at 96.4 for this year as well. So we're maintaining that. This is a slide we're real proud of. Culmination of hard work from pre-K all the way through the high schools to have our dropout rate be the lowest of all these districts that we look at. We would love for this to be at zero. We all understand and recognize that, but we want to continue to bring this down as low as we can. Included in the taper, they'll, they'll give us a snapshot of our most recent graduating classes and how they've performed, and they'll give us a five-year picture and a six-year picture, because not all students are finished in four years. Some are still working to complete high school. So you can see here, our class of 2015, five-year cohort, you can see at five years, 97.4% had graduated. And we talk about that often. We talk about those continuers, right? And how do you, those kids that don't quite make it for May graduation, but can we get them to come back? Will you come back? And when they come back, can we convert them to graduates? And we've done a very nice job of doing that. This is our four-year cohort of our 2016. So there are those students, they're the continuers, the 2.3%. Hopefully, by the time we see this information next year, we will converted those to graduates. Once again, we push all of our students to take the recommended plan or distinguished achievement program. We want, it's our expectation that students will take the most rigorous curriculum in their high school career. Our students have two opportunities to earn college credit in high school. One is our great dual-credit program that works with Lone Star College. The other way is more of a national program, that's Advanced Placement. The students take a college-level course within their high school. At the conclusion of the course, they take an exam, and if they make a passing score on the exam, then they earn college credit. So you can see, we had 36.8% of our students taking AP exams. That number continues to increase, and we're proud of that number. We want students to take that opportunity to challenge themselves in the classroom. And then our students are scoring above criteria, and they're at 64%. That's a strong number, and this slide can be a little misleading based on philosophical differences within districts. You know, a student can take an AP course and then not choose to take the test at the end of the course, and that's not uncommon. So you may have a student that's taking six AP courses in their high school, and they decide, you know what, I don't have time to prepare for all six of these exams, because they're all kind of within a two-week window. I think I'll just take three of them instead of taking all six. Well, we encourage in Conroy ISD our students to take all of those exams, because we think there is a benefit for sitting for that exam, even if they don't make the passing score. And so that may be reflected in our number here, but we do think that's important. This reflects a number of our students that took the SAT or ACT college entrance exams last year, and then how well they performed. We like to put our academic success in context. You know, we have two great charges as a public school institution. One is to provide a great education. The second is to be great stewards of taxpayers' dollars. And the FAST report annually looks at exactly that. It rates schools on how they perform academically and how they perform financially. And you can see that we are one of only three districts of the over 1,000 school districts in the state of Texas that have received all five stars for six consecutive years of the program. And then that's reflected here, once again, with these same school districts. You look at total tax rate, we're at $1.28, which is well below any of the other districts that we compared with so well, performance-wise. A few financial slides here, just that, and I'll point out a few highlights as we go through. We're very proud of the first number, that 60.9% of our budget goes to instruction. You know, being over four points higher than the state, we want to make sure that we're investing our resources in the classroom with our students. Also, as you go down, different things that you may notice is that we almost half a point higher in guidance and counseling. We believe in counselors. We have counselors in all of our schools. We actually added a counselor a few years ago at each of our high schools. We do believe in the great work that they do. Also, health services. We have a nurse at each one of our campuses. Transportation continues to be an expense for us. We are a very large school district, and our buses travel many miles per day, so we are well above the state in transportation expenses. When you look at our staff overall, you could notice our percent of staff and central administration. We run a very small central administration here in Conroy ISD. And on the last slide, you may notice that just general administration, our costs are much lower than the state. We also report annually our criminal incidents. You know, we have great students in Conroy ISD, and over 61,000 students come to school. 170, this year, this past year, 178 days, that's almost 11 million school days. But occasionally, students make a bad choice and find themselves in a little bit of trouble. And so we did have 57 reportable criminal incidents last year. 36 of those were felony-controlled substance, and a majority of those are coming straight out of mom and dad's medicine cabinet at home. It continues to be our number-one incident. It's prescription drugs that students are bringing from home. Additionally, a student may get in trouble at another district and then move into Conroy ISD, and then it still shows up on our report. And so that, I know that's the case with at least one of them on our report this year. When our students go out and attend Texas public four-year and two-year schools, we are able to retrieve some data back on them. And so that's always very helpful. So you can see that we had 1,718 students attending those colleges and universities. And let's see how they did. Well, a strong majority of them have done very well. You can see the 2.5 GPA and above is a strong majority of our students, so they are well-prepared when they get to college, and they're performing at a high level. 355 of those students are getting fired up, and they're going to do better next semester, I'm sure. If they get the chance, I'm sure. That's the challenge. But the slides that I presented tonight, in addition to our complete district taper and our district annual report that has very in-depth information on each campus, all the way down through AP scores, all of that is available on our website. And like I said, you can also go to TEA's website and pull a variety of information about not only our school district, but any school district in the state.
Great. Thank you, Dr. Knell. At this time, I'll ask anyone who has any comments to please come to the podium, and if you'll state your name and make your comment, we'd appreciate it. Okay, see, and no takers. That concludes our public hearing. Thank you.
Call this meeting in the Conroy Independent School District Board of Trustees to order. Let the record show that a core of my members is present, that this meeting has been duly called, and that notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with Texas Government Code, Texas Openset Meetings Act, Chapter 551. The time is now 6:13. All right. Please stand with me while Mr. Kidd leads us in the invocation and Mr. Williams in the pledges.
If you would like to, please join me in prayer. Dear Heavenly Father, dear God, we just praise you, and we thank you for the many blessings you bestowed upon this community and this school district. Dear God, specifically tonight, we want to just lift up the family of Larry Moore and the whole Morehead Junior High family, and give them, Lord, the comfort and peace that only you can provide. Just be with them, and thank you for his service to CISD and the legacy that he's left. Dear God, we also specifically thank you, God, for the principals, the assistant principals, the staff, and all of the CISD employees here tonight, Lord, for just their support, for their energy, their dedication. Dear God, just be with them for this school year, and just help them and guide and direct them in their everyday positions and how they impact our children, Lord. Thank you so much for them. Dear God, again, just thank you for the privilege and the opportunity to serve on this board. We ask for your guidance. We ask for your direction, so that we may glorify you and serve the students in our district. Dear God, we also just ask for your blanket of protection over our children who return to school tomorrow and for the rest of the school year, for all of those, Lord, in our district. Just thank you for this time together tonight. In your heavenly name, we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, in the physical, for the religion and justice of our home. Honor, honor, and respect, the flag of Texas. I pledge allegiance to the Texas, one state under God, one and universal.
Thank you, Mr. Williams, Mr. Kidd. Item 2A, special district recognition. Dr. Stockton.
I'm very excited to, tonight, just excited, period. Excited we're going to be in school tomorrow, by the way. I'm excited tonight to ask Tasha Smith to come in, come up to the podium and share some comments about our appreciation for our wonderful school board. Tasha?
Good evening, President Bush, members of the board, Dr. Stockton. It is my honor to represent all Conroy ISD administrators, educators, staff members, and students to thank each and every one of you for all that you do for the Conroy Independent School District. God, you demonstrate strength and dedication as you focus on excellence for CISD communities, teachers, staff members, and most importantly, our students. You unselfishly contribute your time and talents toward the advancement of our schools and the students we serve. You are extraordinary individuals who have voluntarily tackled the enormous job of governing our school district. Our January has been dedicated as School Board Appreciation Month. Please, I am really thankful for all that you do every day. Our students have demonstrated their appreciation by providing the cards, posters, banners, small gifts, drawings, and candy that you see here tonight. Please accept these tokens of our appreciation for our leadership, support, and the numerous hours you give to make our district the outstanding place that it truly is to live, to work, and to go to school. It is with your leadership that you are helping to ensure that our students graduate with confidence and competence to do whatever they wish. I ask all of the attendees tonight to join with me in a round of applause to honor and thank the CISD Board of Trustees for their hard work, dedication, and commitment to creating a bright future for all of our students.
All right. Item 2B, Ms. Godfrey, has anyone signed up to speak to the board? All right. Item three is the consent agenda. I've had a request to remove item G to discuss, so without any other, do I have a motion to prove?
Motion to accept the consent agenda as presented with the exception of item G.
Second the motion.
All in favor? All right. Item 3G is receive and consider adoption of local policies included in Local Policy Manual Update 109. And Mr. Moore, I'm going to turn it over to you.
Thank you. I would just like to request a little bit more information about this item. Just some general background information is the reasoning why we're suggesting reducing the waiver period from 30 to 15 days. And do we have any figures as, even if it's just approximate, I'm not asking for specific to the cent, but ballpark as to how much it costs the district in unpaid lunch money every month?
Sure, I'll try to answer that question. First, little background, that's a relatively new policy. I think it just went in a few months ago. And then when it did, we just made up a day of 30 days, kind of as a timeline. And after we've gotten into it, what we've learned is that we probably need to shorten that. We've checked what other districts do, and the reason we want to shorten it is because we found that when we start having conversations with families, oftentimes they end up applying for and qualifying for free and reduced lunch. So the sooner we start having those conversations, the better. And so that's really our motive behind it. It doesn't change anything, the fact that we're committed to serving our students meals each and every day. That's really a policy about when we start having those formal conversations with families about that. To date, we're averaging probably a little bit over $15,000 a month, about what we're not collecting in lunches that we're serving.
Thank you.
Then is your question?
Yes, it did. Thank you.
Any other questions?
Motion to approve.
My second the motion.
All right. All those in favor? Motion passes. Item 4A, we're actually going to take a moment and have a public hearing, so for the moment, we are in recess, and the time is now 6:20.
Okay, at this time, we're going to have our second public hearing tonight. I'm going to ask Debbie Phillips to come up and present the public hearing for the turnaround plan for Sam Houston Elementary School.
Thank you. Good evening, President Bush, Dr. Stockton, members of the board. I'm here this evening to present the turnaround plan for Sam Houston Elementary. But before I get started, I have to acknowledge the incredible leadership team that are here tonight. Viviana Harris, our new principal over there, Viviana Field stands, doing a fantastic job. And then we also have our two assistant principals, Gabe Hernandez and Teresa Waller, as well. We are really proud of the job that they're doing. They're really digging in and getting after it, and we're starting to see some great results. But I'd like to start the evening with reviewing the timeline for Houston's improvement required process, because it can be confusing. In August of 2017, the final accountability results were released, and Houston Elementary received a second-year improvement required rating. In September of 2017, you approved the targeted improvement plan for Houston Elementary. Today, January 8, 2018, we are here for your approval for the Houston Turnaround Plan. In August, we're going to be anxiously awaiting the final accountability results, and when Houston Elementary receives a met-standard rating, you will then be required to decide if you want the turnaround plan to be implemented, if you want the turnaround plan to be modified, or if you want it to be discontinued. If you decide to implement this plan that I present to you tonight, it will begin in August, and it will continue over the next two years. So it's not to be confused. When a school receives an improvement required rating two years in a row, there are two plans. The first plan Houston developed was the targeted improvement plan, and it's a very comprehensive plan that targets the areas of need, and you approved it in September. The plan included three major strategies, and here they are, just for your, just to remind you. One strategy was to utilize the professional learning community approach for planning time and resources to generate quality questions for effective guided reading. The school's been working on guided reading for the past two years. The second strategy was to utilize effective conferring and writer's workshop to guide future instruction. And then you'll recall, the third strategy was to utilize professional learning, community, planning time, and resources to appropriately plan for small-group math instruction. So that was all of the targeted improvement plan that you approved earlier. So tonight, I'm bringing for your approval the second plan, Houston's Turnaround Plan. This plan was developed by Houston's core team, an outside-school improvement professional that we've been working with. We had a lot of district support, district coaches, and district CNI team, and then also representative from Region 6 gave input as well. We consulted with a TEA representative, and then also solicited feedback from parents. So the purpose of the turnaround plan is to develop a systemic approach to producing significant and sustainable gains and achievement, and to get a met-standard rating within two years of implementation. The plan must include an initiative that impacts all grade levels and all teachers, and it will be required to be implemented for the next two years. The initiative that Sam Houston is adopting for this turnaround plan is that of instructional rounds, and some of you have heard about that. This was also the turnaround plan for Austin Elementary, and they've had a lot of success with that. And so I know the Houston teachers are excited to implement that as well at their school. And you'll recall, it's similar to medical rounds. Teachers, it's a process of teachers going into classrooms and learning from each other. Administrators are not present during the rounds. The purpose is to grow instructional practices, and there's a lead teacher selected, typically an instructional coach, who facilitates small groups of teachers in these rounds. The rounds are going to be focused on a common objective, something that's already in their plan. For example, questioning and guided reading, conferring and writing, or possibly small-group math. The teachers go in and observe each other teaching, and then they debrief together on the observation. And ultimately, this process will enhance teachers' pedagogical skills and develop a culture of collaboration. After the rounds, after teachers are observing, they identify and they discuss effective practices that they observed. They talk about things that they're already using in their classroom that they noticed. They'll talk about practices that they currently use, but they're going to reexamine in light of what they observed. And then they'll also discuss practices that they don't currently use, but they're willing to try after they've seen people use it well. And so here's where our campus and district coaches come in to support teachers as they start to use these new practices. So that's the Houston Turnaround Plan. I was wondering if there's any questions or comments.
At this time, if anyone from the audience would like to make a comment, if you'll come to the podium and make your comment, state your name and make your comment, we'd appreciate Okay, that ends our public hearing, and I'll turn it back over to you, Ms. Bush.
All right. So our board meeting reconvenes at 6:26, and item 4A is the resolution to adopt the turnaround plan for Houston Elementary. Do I have a motion?
She'll move. Second.
All right. Any discussion?
Any question? I noticed the turnaround plan is more internally focused.
Yes.
Have we started to take consideration to external factors, community involvement, parental involvement? Has any efforts been put into seeing how much of an impact that would have as far as the success of the district, not the district, but that specific school?
I think, Viviana, would you mind coming in and just addressing that, please?
Hey. So in order to get our community involved, what we've do, what we do is we put out newsletters to all of our parents every weekly, every week, and encourage them to come up and volunteer in any way possible. We've noticed that we don't have a lot of success with that. So then what we've done is we call parents one-to-one and have them have conferences with us. We go, our, myself and our two APs, go to car rider lines and start meeting parents and let ourselves known. We've gone to houses to just, if they need anything, how can we help them support their students? So it's not only about the turnaround plan, but it is about the whole community, because we noticed that a lot of times our parents don't know how to read or write and are really afraid to come to school. So we make ourselves available for them. We call them, we talk to parents, we talk to kids, we talk to community members. So what we have is, we have, we don't have a lot of parent support, but we do have a lot of community support through our churches, through our volunteers, and everybody that kind of comes and helps out with our campuses. And we have noticed a lot of success in that.
Would you also share your mentor program, please?
Sure. So we have a mentor program that comes, there's two different mentor programs that happen. One is with our community. So some of you know Gail Drummond, and she's part of that community outreach that comes and helps with our kids. And we have things like Girls on the Run that they come and help out. They come with readers that help that out, you know, help out as well. We also have a mentor program where our educators are taking on a child. So each one of our teachers, our staff members, myself, our leadership team, everybody on campus, every adult, has a child that they see, and they mentor every week. And so that, not every week, every month, so that we make sure that we are hitting every critical student for whatever... critical student for whatever their need is, because some kids may need academic, but some kids just need, yeah, and a social-emotional connection as well.
Phenomenal. I know you guys are doing outstanding job over there, Viviana. We have a rapport with you guys, so great job. And I just want to make sure that we're not just, you know, looking internally, we're focused on some of those external factors that could be heavily influencing some of our successes as well as some of our shortcomings. So it's a great job.
Yes.
And what you've just described is outstanding as relates to making that happen as far as a community effort as opposed to a standalone school. Thank you.
Thank you.
If you would stay, I have another question, though.
Okay.
And I'm going to put you on the spot a little bit.
Okay.
But to add on, I was right on target with Mr. Williams' comments. I'm concerned about more than just our students, although I'm concerned about Sam Houston and our students, but our family there. The families, as you mentioned, those that cannot read or academically are not able to many times help their children at night with homework. What can we as a board, two questions. One, the first one, I'll give you, I'll give you the questions and give you a chance to respond. What can we as a board do to help support those efforts? I understand legally, we're not responsible for educating adults, but morally, I believe we are responsible for educating those adults as well. So one question is, what can we as a board do? The second one is, maybe there's something else in the community we can connect with, maybe it's through Mr. Chavez or somewhere out there that we can connect with community support, where we can try to begin offering, in addition to everything we're doing through curriculum and instruction and the professional learning communities and everything else in the schools, outside the schools, in the evenings, to help those families better help their students at night. So I'm just looking for things that you can, I'm retired now, and I've got time, so.
Come on over. He has been rubbing that in.
It's seven in the morning.
Absolutely. Our doors open at seven thirty.
That is a great question, and actually, we've, I've actually thought about that a lot, and how we can get our community members more involved. And in that have come up with, you know, we've kind of looked at the love and logic and how we can get that on our campus, and we've actually started the wheels turning on that. And also, just being able to offer classes. I know that in a former school that I was still in the district, they offered ESL classes through Regions, I think it was Six, that would come and do classes for our community and things like that. So not something I have looked into, but something that I have always had, you know, in the back of my mind on how we can support our parents and just what are the, what are the questions that we ask students when they're reading? You know, books to be able to give to them to be able to read at night. Math has changed a lot since our parents went to school, and then just being able to support them in that aspect. We do do some nights like that, which are called our Title I nights, and we, our teachers are great about putting out the information and things like that, but that's usually about three nights a year. And really, what I would like to do is more consecutive nights that they could come and kind of do the skill and then come back, and we could tell them what's next. So when looking at that, it's really trying to teach them how to better support their students at home.
Partnership with the local churches and religious organizations is always a good avenue.
Yes.
Isn't one of your churches in your local area teaching English to parents?
I believe at their church, I'm not quite sure, I'm not positive about that, so I don't know.
Miss Drummond's church.
I am, and we need to get you on the same page so you can direct them.
Yes, that would be lovely, yes.
Miss Drummond's church does, but it's not in your neighborhood, so.
And I'm not trying to add to your load, please.
No, no, please, please, and this might sound a little crazy, but, so I take on the whole child, and that child comes with parents and families and everything else. So when I became a principal, that was something that I just knew that was done for me as a child in, or as a student in CIST, and I promised myself that that's what I would do for the students wherever I was. So that's not something that I don't, I don't mind taking that on, that is absolutely something that I would love to do.
We appreciate it.
Great job.
Thank you.
Entire Sam.
Yes, for more.
I have a question I'll address to both of you here. The plan seems to place a lot of perhaps additional work on instructional coaches. Happen to know a little bit about what instructional coaches do on a campus that's not involved under a plan like this. Are there any staffing or funding issues that need to be raised to be able to make this a workable plan? Are we in danger of overworking instructional coaches? I'm sure no, no principal would ever turn down extra money or people.
Would never turn down extra money.
Is there any request along those lines that comes along with this plan?
I mean, you have to answer now, maybe you guys can get back with us as to what you, what your expectations are, and any assistance that we may give.
Yeah, I will say Viviana has asked specifically for different types of staffing, and we have met those requests. So she wanted somebody in particular to help support behavior, and so that was provided this year, extra tutoring. So things that may have been on the coaches' back are taken off of the coaches so that they're allowed to, you know, do what they do best, and that's work with teachers.
Wonderful.
I know all the administrators in here, which is probably a lot of the room, and I certainly know this board knows it, but, you know, you're one of those special ones that when Dr. Stockton calls, you leave your high-performing school, and you come over here and fix this one. And so I'd just like to give you a personal shout-out to thank you for that, because you had it made over here and you left.
We're getting there, we're getting there. Thank you.
Miss Drummond, thank you for mentioning that. I was going to interject that one of the big parts of this plan was putting Viviana there last spring.
Yes, it is.
And I will say, when we mutually agreed on that, and we did.
We did, we did.
One of the things I told her was to make sure if there's something she needs, let us know.
Yeah.
Because that, that school is critical to our success, and we need to do that. Sam Houston, as some of you know, has a great tradition, and there are people who've been volunteering at Sam Houston for years and years and years, kind of a legacy. And churches involved, and I think Viviana's in the phase of trying to figure out what's out there, putting together. I've been to, since you've been there, I've been to two different student celebrations with mentors, and it's really a special thing. So thank you for your support, and publicly, again, if there's anything you need, let us know.
Thank you.
Great job, Ms. Harris.
All right. We have had our discussion, and it's time to vote on.
Do we need a motion to approve?
We actually moved, and we had our second, so we've had discussion now, and it is time for approval. All those in favor? Thank you very much. Motion passes. Thank you, Dr. Phillips. Ms. Harris and all of your staff, thank you very much. We appreciate all that you're doing. Item 4B, consider approval of the Texas Education Agency Technology Lending Program grant.
Mr. Kaker, if you'll come present that item, please.
Thank you, Dr. Stockton, President Bush, members of the board, Dr. Stockton. I'm here tonight to ask for your approval for us to go forward with the Texas Education Agency Technology Lending Program grant. You have the information in front of you. It's a TEA grant. We applied for it in two thousand and fourteen, and we're successful with that grant application. At that time, the grant served Washington Junior High very effectively in the area of math. What we are intending to do with this grant is go back to Washington Junior High, following that plan, and supporting students with technology and access to technology in their homes, which will also support the parent community as part of that work. And this year, focus on English, language arts, and mainly on writing, which aligns with work we're doing in curriculum and instruction, and specifically around seventh-grade writing, which, as you know, is an area that we're challenged with. And so we are seeking your support. The grant is a one-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar grant for one year, and there are no matching funds required.
So moved. Second.
All right. Any discussion, questions? All those in favor?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I'll also like, excuse me, I'd like to point out, too, that that is the same feeder zone of Sam Houston Elementary.
Yes. All right. Item 5A, consider approval of the two thousand and eighteen, nineteen school calendar.
Hey, Dr. Knell, if you'll present that item, please.
Well, good evening once again. The school calendar is a process, you know, and we have our district-level planning and decision-making committee that works very diligently to put forth a good calendars for the public, both to comment on and then for us to present to you. And I just want to kind of highlight the process once again. We start back in October, and we begin the discussion, we get feedback from the board, and we were able to put up in November two draft calendars on our website for the public to make comment on. Ms. Blakelock does a great job of creating a format on our website that I think is very user-friendly. Almost three thousand comments this year came through. And so that's very helpful for the committee. The committee actually met last week, and we talked about the comments that came in. We looked at the, not only the comments, but just the raw data of, you know, we kind of had a simple tally going for what people preferred of one draft over the other. And with that, the district-level committee was able to unanimously pick one of the calendars that they would put forth tonight for your approval. And that was draft two of the two that were up there. It received almost sixty percent of the total, if you want to call it a vote, but sixty percent of the responses were in favor of draft two. And just a few of the highlights of draft two. It's a hundred and seventy-seven days of instruction for students, a hundred and eighty-seven days for teachers, early release day at the conclusion of each of our grading periods, first day of class for students is August fifteenth, that's the midweek start. Again, as we did this year, we discussed last month the positive feedback. Full week break at Thanksgiving. Winter break begins on December twentieth. Spring break, we did also request feedback on spring break dates through our website. The majority came back wanting the early, the eleventh to the fifteenth, and then since we put that up during the process, more and more institutions released their spring breaks, and it turned out that that early spring break matched up with Lone Star College and Sam Houston, which are two that play a big role in our community and our families. We have a holiday on April nineteenth, and then one change from this year's calendar would be a holiday on April twenty-second as well. Last day of classes for students, May thirtieth. And then once again, just as our calendar this year does not include inclement weather days for students, we have enough minutes built into this calendar that if we were to have freezing days again.
That will happen.
Yeah, that will never happen again, I'm sure, right? But if that were to happen, we have enough minutes built in that we wouldn't have to ask our students to make up a day.
Wonderful.
So happy to answer any questions.
Principals.
So, I'm sorry.
Principals?
Oh, and then, in addition to the feedback from our district-level committee, we ask our principals, which they prefer, and unanimously, our principals preferred draft two over draft one as well.
All right. Do we have a motion?
I move that we accept draft two for school calendar two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen.
Second.
All right. Any discussion, questions for Dr. Knell? I want to thank you for the work that the committee's done. I know that they spent a lot of time, and y'all spent a lot of time compiling the three thousand comments and getting all that ready for them. I really appreciate that, so thank you very much. All those in favor? This is our new calendar for next year.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 5B, consider approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment for Austin Elementary additions and renovations, and authorize the superintendent to execute contract documents. Dr. Stockton.
Easy Foster, if you'll come present that item, please.
Good evening, President Bush, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton. It's my pleasure to bring forward for your consideration and approval a guaranteed maximum price amendment for the Austin Elementary additions and renovations project, and again, authorize, Dr. Stockton, to execute the contract documents. In February of two thousand and seventeen, we selected GTT Inc. as our district's construction manager at risk for our Austin Elementary project. Based on their proposal for this work, we have negotiated a guaranteed maximum price of eighteen million, two-hundred-seventy-one thousand, one-hundred-twenty-one dollars. At this time, we're asking for your approval of the guaranteed maximum price.
A move we approve is presented.
All right. Any discussion, questions? Mr. Holmes.
You know, as the, as the economy rekindles and, you know, bricklayers decide they want more money for things and everything, budgets get, you know, and anytime you're rebuilding a school, you know, you run into surprises like that. It's not a clean, new school on a lot. But I just had a question about the budget trimming, you know, you came up with some ideas, or your team, that's just the team, came up with some ideas on what to cut or what to pull back on or what to do. And, and I just want to ask you, because I don't know, okay? I admit, I don't know. But when you start taking layers of something out for forty-eight thousand dollars, you know, we have contingencies in the bond, we have, you know, we're blessed financially and so on and so forth. I just want to make sure that we're not going to regret. And I'm sure we're not, I'm asking a question that I think I know how you're going to answer, but I don't feel good about not asking. So I just want you to tell me the things you cut out of that school are not making it less of a school than it needs to be, that are not going to cost us on energy, that are, you know, because I'd just soon give you the forty-eight thousand dollars another way, or whatever. And I'm not going to argue with you, because I don't know, but I do want to hear from you that those differences aren't going to make a difference.
Well, and we're confident that the, we call it value engineering on our side, which is really trying to squeeze the best value out of what we've got. Our bid day quotes for everything that we dreamed that we could have wanted for Austin Elementary were about a million dollars higher than what we're looking at right now, a little bit more than that, actually. If you recall, a couple of months ago, we bought a, or agreed to buy a purchased piece of land to help us mitigate some of the unforeseen's that we had. When we planned this back in two thousand and fourteen, two thousand and fifteen in preparation for our bond, we didn't anticipate having to redo the underground utilities. So we've, in the price that we're presenting tonight for approval, we are completely one-hundred and eighty degrees changing the drainage on this site, taking it to that pond, which we're almost done with the investigation of buying that piece of land. And that is the, buying the land, digging the pond was the least expensive way to do, to handle the storm drainage. We've had, had a similar situation with the domestic water that serves that campus. City Cut Shoot doesn't have the capacity we need for the building we're going to build. So we've had to do some infrastructure upgrades on the site in order to accommodate their small amount of water coming to our site. So you'll see a storage tank out there when we get, when we're all done, to make that work. On the mechanical equipment, the things that really drive our energy budget and our energy utility bills, we're putting in the same equipment here that we're putting in the new flex schools, the new high school. So we didn't actually skimp on the actual equipment that's going in. The things that actually turn and use energy, we're doing the right way. I'm confident that the package we put up, Marshall Schrader will be absolutely thrilled to maintain that equipment that we're putting in there. So the concessions we made were, generally speaking, cosmetic in nature. So we're building, reorienting that building on that site, changing the parking lot, making it safer, and, but we're not taking away from anything where anybody's going to look at Austin Elementary and think that we did them a disservice, or they got second-hand, or everything they're getting is first-class, first-rate for the price that we're putting in front of you tonight.
Okay. Specifically, I just want to make sure, though, that I understand with regard to, I understand first-rate energy production, but, you know, we've spent millions of dollars replacing light bulbs and saved millions of dollars on energy, and, you know, when you start cutting, I can only assume that it's layers of either soundproofing or sound, or energy, I just want to make sure that you're telling me that the building's going to hold the heat and the air conditioning, and it was, it was a little bit overkill maybe when you put everything you could dream you want, and, you know, and so on and so forth? And, you know, I just, I just want to make sure, because, you know, forty-eight thousand dollars now, having to go back later, it's two-hundred-and-forty-eight thousand, or two million, or whatever.
Absolutely. No, I'd stand behind this package, just as I would our new high school or any of the new elementary schools.
I just wanted to hear you tell me that.
Good to go.
Anybody else? All right. All those in favor? Motion passes. Item 5C, consider approval of the Guaranteed Maximum Price Amendment for the new junior high school in the Conroe feeder zone project. Dr. Stockton, Mr. Foster?
At this time, I'd bring forward for your consideration and approval a guaranteed maximum price amendment for a new junior high school in the Conroe High School feeder zone. In April of two thousand and seventeen, we selected Marshall Construction to be our construction manager at risk for this new junior high school project. This project also includes-
This project also includes a 10-classroom addition at Irons Junior High. Based on Marshall Construction's proposal for this work, we've negotiated a guaranteed maximum price of $55,948,324. At this time, we're requesting your approval of the guaranteed maximum price.
I'll move.
I second the motion.
All right. Any questions? Discussion? All right. All those in favor? Motion passes. Item 5D, consider approval of the amendment to the design-build contract for the life cycle replacement of Stadium Scoreboard Systems Project. Mr. Foster?
At this time, we bring forward for your consideration and approval an amendment to the design-build contract for our life cycle replacement of our Stadium Scoreboard Systems Project. In October of 2017, we selected Daktronics to be our design builder for this project. This project includes the replacement of the scoreboard systems at Buddy Moorhead Memorial Stadium, Woodforest Bank Stadium, and inside our auditorium. On November the 20th, we entered into a contract with Daktronics on a design-build basis, and since then, we've been working with Daktronics to come up with what we've wanted for our budget. And at this time, we're asking for a negotiator, or we're asking for approval for a negotiated stipulated sum price of $3,124,526.
I'm going to ask Darren Rice to provide a little additional information before...
Yeah, if I could just give y'all some financial information, kind of the history of where we currently are with our current contract with Daktronics, and then what we are forecasting for the new contract. Under the current contract, we generated a little over $4 million worth of revenue from advertisement sales. The total cost of that project, this last project, was a little over $2.8 million. So, that $1.2 million difference through the contract has been split between Daktronics and CISD by a 68/32 percentage. We get 68% of that. So, each year, we get a little bonus on those revenues from those sales. Looking at the current contract and the current revenue stream that we're anticipating, we're anticipating that the new scoreboards will be paid off in about eight and a half years. And that's about $415,000 a month worth of revenues coming in off of those, I mean, a year, I'm sorry, off of those scoreboards.
What's the life expectancy? I mean, how long?
Our scoreboard systems have been in place. This is their 10th season currently, so we would anticipate a similar lifespan for the next round.
You presented it as expense, you presented it as profit center, so...
We will, we can pass out.
Yeah, you have a lot better life.
Well, we want to make sure that it is a moneymaker for us.
I mean, it's making over 10% return on investment, I mean...
Well, they presented, we really shouldn't be discussing until we put a motion and a second on the floor, so...
Well, at this time, we're requesting your approval...
Thank you.
...of the amendment to the contract for $3,124,526.
I'll second.
Motion in a second. Now, go forward.
No, I'm good.
You're good? You liked daring that in a little bit more than you...
I appreciate that.
Hurry up and vote, so we don't miss any of you.
We're all good? All right. Motion to approve? All passes. Thank you both very much. Item 5E, consider approval of architectural, engineering, and building commissioning service providers. Mr. Foster?
Again, at this time, I bring forward for your consideration and approval a list of service providers for architectural, engineering, and building commissioning services. As part of a district our size, we have an ongoing process of evaluating facilities, planning for future facility needs, also planning for future construction. We published a request for qualifications for an architectural, engineering, and building commissioning services. We advertise these packages as we would any other construction project. We received qualification statements in December, and we received 19 responses from various architectural, engineering, and commissioning firms. Based on the submitted qualifications, and we're recommending a pool of service providers. So, in the architectural category, we're recommending PBK Architects, Texas IBI Group, DLR Group, and VOK Architects. For MEP Engineering, we're offering up PBK Architects, DBR Engineering Consultants, DLR Group, and CMTA Inc. In building commissioning, we're offering PBK Architects, DBR Engineering Consultants, DLR Group, CMTA Inc., and Envy Engineering. Now, the firms selected, just because you're on the list, doesn't guarantee you're going to get any work out of us. We are just trying to create a pool that has an inclusive, or an all-inclusive area, so we have the service providers we need to look forward into the future and plan our work. This also gives us several options when negotiating on individual projects. We want to put the right vendor with the right project and the right team, especially when you throw building commissioning into it. If one firm designs it, they can't commission it, so we have to have a larger group so we don't, so we can cross-pollinate and get our, and meet all the standards for the new codes. Each of these firms is actively involved in the K-12 market in the Houston area. Each of them have personnel and folks working for them that we are familiar with and understand their capabilities. We believe they represent the most highly qualified firms to perform the work for Conroe ISD, and we intend to negotiate fair and reasonable prices for projects individually as we move forward into the future. At this time, we request your approval of the pool.
So, move?
Thank you.
Okay. Discussion questions? Mr. Huns.
I do.
Oh, I'm just going to have to say, I'm going to have to stay in on the vote. Make that mark.
Actually, I want to digress a little bit on the scoreboards. What's the salvage value of that? Do we give those to other districts? I know we own them based on, we paid them freight money. Do we give those away? What do we do with those?
Well, we reserve the first right of refusal on all projects where we're dismailing equipment that is currently in operation. So, what Daktronics has agreed is dismailing the current systems that are there, set them aside for us to kind of pick through and get the parts that we need from our departments, and then whatever's left, they are going to recycle.
Sorry, I apologize. That was on my note.
Any questions about item 5E?
Has the, have the, has the law rules, whoever you want to say, changed? I don't ever remember commissioning. And we might have called it something different. We might have approved them. We approved architects at the first of a bond. We approved engineering firms and construction managers at risk, and general contractors, and this and that and the other. And I've never remembered. So, explain to me how the commissioning system has come about.
Certainly. In years past, we've done some different types of commissioning within the district. Marshall and his group did some retro commissioning, going back into buildings to squeeze efficiencies out of them in years past. We took those, that service provider we used for that, and we commissioned some of our other ugly projects where we did a lot of mechanical and air conditioning overhauls. When we got going on the new high school, we actually hired a third-party commissioning agent to look over that giant complex system, because this is the largest one we've built in over a decade. Now, since then, the energy code has changed, and there was a statewide adoption of the energy code, IACC, for 2016, I believe, if I have the numbers right. In November of 2016, it was adopted statewide. So, it finally kind of caught up with us on our flex schools. So, Flex 18 is being third-party commissioned. Remember back a couple of months ago, we had a pool to finish out our bond projects, and every project moving forward, all of our local municipalities have adopted the latest energy code. So, our compliance pathway in that energy code requires a third-party commissioning agent, which is why we're trying to create that pool now.
Okay, so I understand the commissioning agents, okay? But, you know, for example, we have a couple of architects that we're using in this bond package, right? It's predetermined, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay. I guess it could change, but anyway, so far, whatever, it's predetermined. But why are we approving other architects? I understand the commissioning, but why are we approving other architectural firms?
Because this is a much longer, bigger-picture item. So, we're nearing the end of our 2015 bond projects. As a matter of fact, after the next board meeting, we'll only have one left to approve. And then, everything we told the voters we were going to do will be on the books and under contract.
Yes.
So, now, it's time to take a step back and look at what the future holds for us. So, we're always looking and always working with our maintenance department to see where the boogers are and where things are going to crop up on us, so that we can be ready when things happen. So, this is a team of folks that will be ready and available for us as we move forward into the future for long-range capital planning, as we figure out what our demographics are. If we sustain 2,000 students a year, that is one growth pattern. If we go 1,500, that's a different growth pattern.
Okay, so let me ask the question differently. You asking me to approve some architects tonight that I don't know that's familiar with as I am others?
There are two...
Are you asking me to approve them for potential use in the next bond, for example?
We don't want to presume the next bond, for example, but...
Okay, but I mean, if it were to pass, am I approving tonight people that would, that could potentially serve, or at least you decide, and you bring it to me to vote on in that bond?
Yes. I mean, this would be the team that we would plan that capital, that program with.
Well, I'm not sure I'm ready to do that tonight. I mean, given, I mean, you know, I understood the commissioning part, but the hiring of engineering and architectural firms is on a totally different wavelength. And if they're, you know, I understand the commissioning of the HVAC, but I'm not sure that I am prepared to, like I said, there's some people I'm familiar with and some people that I'm not, and I'm not, maybe that's my fault for not having done more work, but I'm not sure I'm ready to approve that tonight. Do you have to have this for something? Yeah, I'm just asking for a table reason.
Well, when it comes to planning, time is our best friend. So, the longer we put off putting a team together, the shorter time period we would have for something in the future.
But if you didn't have new architects approved until next month, would it break the bank?
No, sir. I mean, by all means, I mean, everything can be adjusted to accommodate.
There's just names on there that I'm not familiar with, with all due respect, and I wasn't sure that I was approving what I'm approving. I thought it was, I understood the commissioning thing to a degree, is the reason I asked the question, but I'm not sure that I'm in agreement with the rest.
Am I understanding correctly, Mr. Foster, this doesn't limit us to only dealing with these as well? This is putting a pool together to start planning and to look at moving forward, but if we choose to use a different architect two years from now that's not on this list, we are able to do that, or a different engineering firm, or anything along those lines. This is just having resources that we've looked at their qualifications, that we can involve in our planning process. That doesn't mean they're guaranteed any work, but it also doesn't mean that anyone else is excluded from that work. Is that correct?
That is correct, and I know Ms. Galatas could confirm for us by looking a little bit further in our own board policies and legal, but the neat thing about architectures and architects and engineers is we're not required to go through an RFU process at all. We can select them on merit alone. So, if there is a one-off project out there that somebody is just the perfect designer for, we can go right to them, as long as we show that we've done the due diligence to make sure they were the right person.
And this is doing the due diligence ahead of time, so that if we have a smaller, let's say, $1 million project that we need someone to be involved in, we can go ahead and just move forward. Is that...
Yes. And I'm simply saying that, and with all due respect, I'm simply saying that I haven't, I haven't vetted for myself some of the names on that list. I thought it was a commissioning thing, and I'm saying to you that once you give him a list of architects or engineers, and he brings a, you know, CSM at risk, and this is the architect, and this is the engineering, and so on and so forth, it's a bigger deal to say no to it then than it is to do your homework upfront. That's all I'm saying. I just don't, I just haven't done my homework.
Mr. Huns, my comments had nothing to do with your remarks. It was for my information. Does anybody else have any other remarks or questions?
And we have, we have all the data we collected. We'd be happy to share the mountain of material with you, so...
I'd like to do that, but I'd also like to make a motion to table this until next month, so that I could do that.
All right.
If it's all the same to anybody, if there's a problem.
Do we have a second on that motion to table? Seeing none? There is no tabling. Motion and a second to approve, this list has been made. I move for a vote. All those in favor? All those opposed? And abstentions? All right. Thank you very much. Item 5F, receive capital improvements updates. Mr. Foster?
At this time, it's my pleasure to bring you up to speed on what's been going on around the district with our capital of improvements that are in progress, and I promise next month, my list will be longer. So, I'm going to take you to Grand Oaks High School. Grand Oaks is on schedule, scheduled to open in August of 2018. So, you can see from the overhead view that everything is coming together nicely on the site. On the back end of our site, we're making the connection to Waterbin Cove. That's the bridge deck that you're looking at there. So, hopefully, in the very near future, we'll be able to drive straight from Grand Oaks High School to Clark Intermediate and not have to go all the way around the Grand Park Way to get there. On the inside of the building, the building's really starting to take its shape, so you're seeing the finishes, you're seeing things come down. This is a picture right down Main Street, just inside the front entry, looking towards the library and the dining commons area. And you're looking at a visqueen wall at the end that separates the academic area from the fine art CTE and athletics area at the back of the building. In our classrooms, you're seeing the colors and the cabinets and things of that nature coming together. The lights are on in the academic wing, the air is on in the academic wing, so that portion of the building is moving along just as we would expect it to. At Clark Intermediate, it is in very much the same schedule as Grand Oaks High School. It is, Clark Intermediate is scheduled to open in August of 2018 at the same time as Grand Oaks. So, you can see from the outside, the brick is working its way around the building. We're looking at a picture of the mechanical yard, so it's the gymnasiums, the back end of the kitchen, things of that nature. This is the, what we would consider the most difficult part of the building to work on. It's finishing first as they move towards the commons and academic areas. So, on the inside of the building, what we're seeing is the development of the building systems. So, you're looking at a shot of the kitchen, which is essentially ready for all the big equipment to come in and be set in place, as we got the walls and all the infrastructure in place for it. Now, on the other side, in the classroom end of the building, that's where the masons are working around to close that building in, but you can also see the building systems as they develop. So, you're looking at the ductwork, the lighting circuitry, the conduits, the back boxes, things that are already up there, the fire sprinkler, lots of the systems already in place, waiting on the building to catch up to them. Moving over to Conroe High School, it's an addition in a renovation project where we're doing a classroom addition that will help us facilitate a major renovation of the main campus. That project is moving along very well. You can see the exterior framing of the building addition is moving along well. We've also recently set and installed the equipment inside the central plant, so this is the heartbeat of the new air conditioning upgrades that are going on that campus. So, that project is on schedule as well, and we're scheduled to be on that campus through December of 2019, and that is our update.
Mr. Foster?
Thank you, Mr. Foster.
Did the weather this week cause us any setbacks with ruptured pipes, damage to temperature-sensitive equipment that was not enclosed, anything like that?
We didn't suffer anything on any job site that we didn't suffer as a district at whole. We were at Grand Oaks this morning when it was about 19 or 20 degrees, and we did have a ruptured backflow preventer there, but Marshall's been driving all over the district with his people, handling ruptured backflow preventers. The good news is the contractor's there on site to handle that one, so it doesn't cost us any additional damages, and they're still paying for the water bill over there. But other than that, Clark did not have, we were there with that contractor today, it didn't have any temperature-related damages. Conroe High School also did not suffer any temperature-related damages, so overall, construction-wise, we did pretty well.
Wonderful.
We did have some pipes break throughout the district, but nothing that prevents us from having school tomorrow. But our maintenance folks were busy last two days.
You've gotten that remark in at least twice now.
Yeah. Don't wait by the phone.
All right. Item 6A, consider approval of the 2016-2017 comprehensive annual financial report. Dr. Stockton?
Mr. Rice, please present that item.
Yes. Good evening, President Bush, members of the board, and Dr. Stockton. It is my pleasure to recommend that the Board of Trustees approve the 2016-2017 comprehensive annual financial report. Now, a lot of work goes into putting this financial reports together, so I would like to recognize the finance staff that is here. Janice Towers and Karen Garz have a very good job. The CAFER was presented to the Audit Committee of the Board for their review and comments. The report was received favorably. The Audit Committee is also recommending this for your approval. Sarah Roberts, partner with Weaver, and there are independent auditors, is here to comment on the CAFER and to address any questions that you may have. Sarah?
Hello, everybody. The type of audit that's applicable to the district is called a single audit. And a single audit, as some of you may know, encompasses both the financial statements and, um, the compliance aspects applicable to the district. Um, at the conclusion of our audit, we issue three reports, one report on the financial statements and two reports on compliance. I'm just gonna run through those reports and just some highlights of the financial statements, and, um, I'd be happy to answer any questions or discuss any specific topics that you'd like to hear about. The first report that we issue is our auditor's report on the financial statements. The final report isn't included in your draft, but I can just tell you that the audit, the opinion that we issued was an unmodified opinion, otherwise known as a clean opinion, which is the highest level of assurance that we, as professional auditors and CPAs, can express that the financial statements have no material misstatements. The financial statements of the district, um, which you can find, starting on page twelve, include, um, government-wide financial statements as well as fund financial statements. The government-wide financial statements present a perspective of the district that encompasses all long-term assets, long-term liabilities, uh, such as, uh, buildings, vehicles, land, as well as, um, general obligation bonds, pension liabilities, other long-term items like that. So the first financial statement is the government-wide statement of net position. And that shows that as of August thirty-first, two thousand seventeen, the district had a total net position of approximately a hundred and fifty-five million, and about ten percent of that, or fifteen million, was unrestricted. Moving forward to, uh, the fund financial statements, which, um, the, the focus on, of the fund financial statements is on the current financial resources and current obligations of the district. So those long-term items I mentioned are excluded. Page fourteen, the governmental funds balance sheet shows that the general fund has total fund balance of about a hundred and thirty-four million, and about ninety-six percent of that, or a hundred and thirty million, is unassigned. Another highlight of the financial statements is the governmental fund statement of revenues, expenditures, and changes in fund balance, which is similar to an income statement or statement of operations. On page eighteen, shows that the net change in fund balance of the general fund was a positive nine and a half million, and that's after transfers out of the general fund of sixteen million. So the net change before transfers was a positive twenty-five point five million. And one thing I want to point out is that the, the unassigned fund balance that I mentioned previously of, um, a hundred and thirty million represents about twenty-eight percent of the general fund's expenditures for this, uh, preceding fiscal year. After the fund financial statements are the notes to the financial statements. The notes present some additional information, additional details, and explanations on the financial statements. There were no new, um, significant new accounting policies adopted this last year, um, no significant changes. The other two reports that we issue are, um, regarding compliance of the district, and those can be found towards the back of the comprehensive annual financial report. The first compliance report is what's called the Independent Auditor's Report on Internal Control Over Financial Reporting and on Compliance and Other Matters, based on an audit of financial statements performed in accordance with government auditing standards. And this report describes the scope of our testing and the results. The bottom line of this report is that we found no, um, material weaknesses in internal control and no instances of reportable non-compliance. The final report that we issue is titled, um, The Independent Auditor's Report on Compliance for Each Major Federal Program and Report on Internal Control Over Compliance Required by the Uniform Guidance. Uniform Guidance is what was formerly known as, um, O M B A one thirty-three, for those of you that may be familiar. Uh, the major program of the district this last, this last fiscal year was Title One. Title One expenditures were about seven point two million, or twenty-two percent of total federal expenditures. And in this, this final report, we again issue a clean opinion, an, an unmodified opinion on compliance. And that's it. So, any questions?
I have a motion to approve the Caffer.
Motion. So move?
I second the motion.
Any discussion questions for?
Madam President, the only comment I'd like to make as Chair of the Audit Committee is we were very pleased with, uh, Weaver and the work that they did. And again, just like to commend Mr. Rice and the entire finance team on a job well done. I've been involved with many boards where sometimes the audit doesn't come out as clean as this, and I just want to thank and applaud the hard work that went into making sure that our district has a financially very sound, uh, plan and, and report, and also, as far as compliance, that we are strong in that area as well.
Yes. I would also say, I, I don't think anyone on this board takes a clean audit for granted, and we are very, very grateful to Mr. Rice and his team, so.
And also, would like to also commend Keema Newton, our own internal auditor, for her efforts as well. A lot of the work that Ms. Newton does helps out Weaver, uh, which substantially saves us some costs in the long run, which is, uh, a big savings for our taxpayers as well.
Thank you, yes.
Thank you.
And I'm John.
All right. Motion and a second has been placed. All those in favor?
Passes.
Passes. Thank you. Uh, item six B, receive final results on the new bond, uh, bonds, series two thousand eighteen.
Mr. Rice, please.
Yes. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. John Robach, the district's financial advisor, to present the financial results from our two thousand and eighteen series bond sale.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. President Bush, members of the board, Dr. Stockton, good evening. Um, as, uh, Board Member Hesons told me earlier today, it's a pleasure to come out here every time. I have good news to report and, and no bad news. So this is, thanks, thank you for having me out tonight to give you the results of the, the two thousand eighteen bond sale. Uh, let me actually, just to push the button to turn, or, oops, here we go. There we go. Uh, I'd like to start off by going over the current market review, um, of the, the municipal bond market. Uh, this, this chart actually shows the municipal market as of the date of the sale, December fourteenth, two thousand seventeen. Uh, the current bond buyer index at the time was a three point four one percent. And to give you kind of some color about the market heading into the bond sale, if you recall, in November, we came out here and asked you to approve the parameter order, uh, they were talking about the new tax reform bill. Well, as we get closer to the decision, what they were gonna put in that reform bill and, and what they're gonna do to the municipal market, the markets kind of went a little volatile. They went a little crazy. Um, they pulled out the ability to tax-exempt refund or advance refund bonds. And so as a result, a lot of volume hit the market. And to give you some numbers, we usually average about ten billion dollars a month in volume in our, in our business. They were doing seventy, twenty billion dollars a week during the month of December. So we entered, we entered the market near the tail end of, of that volume. But with your rating, and with your name, and, and just right planning and a good underwriting team, uh, we, we knocked it out of park. And one of, one of the benefits of having a parameter order is that we had conversations leading into this. And, and Mr. Rice and I talked probably two weeks every day going into this, making sure that there's the right timing. Do we do it now or wait until January? You know, there's always a kind of a January effect where investors have money, but if, with this new tax bill, are they gonna put it to use when the municipal taxes and bonds? So Mr. Rice made a decision to, to go forward on December fourteenth, and as a result, oops, there we go. This is the final source and uses of funds. Uh, we sold a hundred seventy-four point four million dollars in bonds that generated a net premium, which means investors paid more for the bonds than par of twenty-eight point eight million dollars. Lesser issuance expenses generates a total proceeds of two hundred and two million dollars. I apologize, I don't like to do this, but there's a typo on this slide. It was deposited to the construction fund, not to the escrow fund. Uh, this is for the projects that I'll discuss earlier tonight. Uh, the all-cost interest rate on the bonds was a three point four four two percent, and the average life is eighteen point zero five, five years. Uh, again, we sold December fourteenth, and we actually delivered the bonds, and the district received the funds last Thursday, on January eleventh. This is the final debt service requirements. Uh, on far left is your current requirements before the bond sale, and then plus the principal interest in total of the new two thousand eighteen unlimited tax school building bonds for your total debt service requirements is on the far right. Uh, and then scheduled events. Also want to point out, with this sale, we, we finished the two thousand fifteen bond election. And just, uh, to give you all kudos, and Mr. Rice, kudos, y'all completed the program well within what you told, uh, taxpayers. And you were able to maintain the tax rate that you promised them, and you still continue to maintain that tax rate as you go forward the next couple of years. So congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And with that, I'll be happy to answer your questions regarding the bond sale.
I don't think there's any questions. Thank you. We love it when you come with good news.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robach.
All right. Item six C, consider award of R F P seventeen dash oh one dash oh one A.
Mr. Rice?
Yes. Not a matter, I'm recommending that the Board of Trustees award R F P seventeen dash oh one dash oh one A contracted, contracted educational services, professional development, and educational consulting services, January two thousand and eighteen, to thirty vendors listed on the attached tabulation for an estimated annual expenditure of approximately ten thousand dollars. Thus far, one hundred and ninety vendors out of an estimated three hundred and fifty have been awarded since June of two thousand and seventeen. This proposal will remain open until May thirty-first, two thousand and eighteen, for solicitations to be submitted. Service contracts with awarded vendors will remain firm through January thirty-first, two thousand and nineteen, with an option to renew annually for four additional one-year terms through January thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-three. At this time, I recommend your approval.
So move?
Second.
All right. Any questions? All those in favor? Thank you, Mr. Rice. Closed session of the board will now be held on the matters contained in the notice of this meeting as authorized by section five five one dash oh, or pardon me, point oh seven two of the Texas Open Meetings Act. Should the board determine that any final action, final decision, or final vote be required with regard to any matter considered in such closed session or executive meeting or session, then such final action, decision, or final vote shall be at either this public meeting upon the reconvening of this public meeting, or at a subsequent public meeting of the board upon notice thereof, as the board shall determine. A closed session of the board will now be held. It is now seven twenty-one. The board is now in open session at seven forty-six. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
So move.
All right. We are adjourned at seven forty-six.